Good evening, Chair. Calls to order, Board of Health update. This evening, we're going to be hearing from Ms. Marcy Austin, our health officer, and whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Council, President Ms. Vincenti and members of the council. So today is a Board of Health presentation. On our agenda tonight, I'll talk about National Public Health Week. I'll give a bureau updates, including administration, population health, clinical health, family health, care coordination, behavioral health, environmental health, and then I'll make some final remarks. National Public Health Week is celebrated each year on the first full week of April. It is used as a time to recognize the contributions of public health and highlight issues that are important to improving our nation's health. Priority areas that were identified by the American Public Health Association include making health our mission, climate action, health equity and optimizing health for all, amplifying voices in public health, and strengthening the public health workforce. The Hartford County Health Department recognizes the hard work and efforts made by staff to improve the health of Hartford County. Together, we can continue to focus on the vision of making us the healthiest community in Maryland. So now for our program updates. First, for administration, we have focused a lot of energy on our budgets. This is a pie chart of the funding the Health Department will receive in fiscal year 2026. We are grateful to be receiving a 3% increase for fiscal year 26 from the county so that we can continue to serve the community and provide critical and necessary public health services. The Health Department has received some recent budget cuts. On March 25th, all health departments across the state were told that their COVID grants were being cut as of March 24th. Our Health Department receives two of the four federal grants that are being cut. One was until the end of June of 2025, and one that was extended through June 30 of 2026. The grant includes salaries for four health department nurses. In anticipation of these cuts, we have placed our permanent merit nurses into our core budget for the rest of FY '25 and in FY '26. Additionally, the Health Department's family planning budget will have a 33% cut in FY ' '26, which will affect two additional health department nurses. These nurses will also be placed in core for FY '26. Finally, our Behavioral Health Bureau's overdose fatality review board grant was cut in March, and we have placed the one employee in that grant, the chair of the committee, in a different behavioral health budget so that we can continue this important board. So for the rest of FY '25 and '26, staff are protected, and that's barring any mid-year cuts. Beyond that, it's hard to tell. With further reductions of public health funding, we recognize the risk of program closures, layoffs, and a weakened network of community-based services. For the Population Health Bureau, the Fourth Annual IUWE Matter Youth Symposium for Middle and High School Young Men will be held on Saturday, May 17th, from 11:00 to 4:30. This event will be held again in conjunction with our partners at the Ward Y in Abingdon. The event is free, and the first 100 students to register will receive a basketball penny and a swag bag. The day will be filled with food, games, mental health discussions, and a three-on-three basketball tournament. The Minority Health Program, which has been part of our Health Department for four years now, is funded by a Social Determinants of Health grant from the Maryland Department of Health's Minority Health and Health Disparities Program. Population Health just completed a grant application to receive these funds for FY ' '26. The grant will fund the usual work of the Minority Health Program and will look to help with client transportation costs to break down any barriers to attending events. And I had a note for Mr. Bennett, who isn't here tonight, but he had specific concerns at the budget hearing about the temporarily housed in hotels and motels clients. So this transportation funding can also be used to transport these clients to services throughout the county. The Health Department will reach out to the Department of Social Services and the Community Action Agency to let clients know that these services are available. One more slide for Population Health. The Population Health Bureau received a grant from the Maryland Department of Health to purchase firearm safety storage vaults and to host a one-day event to give these out free of charge to Hartford residents. The data for Hartford shows that this is a necessary public health prevention effort that can help save lives. According to the firearm violence dashboard from the Maryland Department of Health, Hartford County recorded 237 firearm-related deaths between January 2015 and September 2024. Of these deaths, 31.6% were homicides, while 66.2 were suicides. Seventeen of the fatalities were among youth ages 0 to 19. Firearms-related mortality disproportionately affects Black and African-American residents with an incident rate of 174.2 per 100,000 compared to 83.6 per 100,000 among white residents. And one more for Population Health, specifically looking at suicides, which is the graph on the right. Suicide rates in Hartford are 1.5 times higher than the state average. The Health Department hopes to make an impact by providing the safety vaults while also looking to our partners to help us spread the word and educate the public on this crucial public health prevention effort. The Hartford County Health Department's Megan's Place held a baby shower on Wednesday, April 23rd, for those enrolled in the program. A total of 14 families attended and enjoyed free food, diaper, wipe, and sleep sack giveaways, raffles for a baby tub, and other infant items, and were given an educational presentation on safe sleep in either English or Spanish. Promoting safe sleep practices is important to help prevent sudden unexpected infant death and sudden infant death syndrome. The Health Department provided a Health of Hartford presentation to the attendees of the GAIN Caregiver Conference on Saturday, April 25th, at the McFaul Center. The presentation highlighted data for ages 60-plus in Hartford, noting the opportunity to address high prevalence of Hartford residents hospitalized for Alzheimer's disease, senile disorder, and dementia. A caregiver is a person who tends to the needs or concerns of a person with short or long-term limitations due to illness, injury, or disability, such as Alzheimer's or dementia. This map shows that in Hartford County, 22% of adults provided regular care to someone with a health problem for 30 days straight or more in 2023. Hartford County is ranked 10th highest compared to the other 24 jurisdictions. And now, we're going to talk about measles for the Clinical Health Bureau. Measles is highly contagious. It's spread through the air when an infected person breathes, coughs, or sneezes. If exposed, nine out of 10 non-immune persons may become sick with measles. In 2025, there have been three confirmed measles cases in Maryland, none in Hartford County. There is no evidence of ongoing transmission of measles in Maryland. However, there are ongoing measles outbreaks in areas outside of Maryland and internationally. Here are our reminders to the public. Measles can be prevented with an MMR vaccine. One dose is 93% effective, and two doses are 97% effective. Recommended childhood vaccine schedule: first dose at 12 to 15 months old, and the second dose at four to six years old. The first signs of measles include fever, cough, runny nose, red watery eyes, small white spots inside the mouth. A rash appears three to five days later. It starts on the face and head and spreads downward. Laboratory testing is needed to confirm a measles infection. There is no specific treatment for the measles vaccine or infection, excuse me. There is no specific treatment for the measles virus. Sorry about that. People in contact with measles should contact their healthcare provider and the Health Department. Immunizations are offered through the Vaccine for Children program to uninsured and underinsured children ages 2 months to 18 years at our Edgewood location. The Health Department offers many vaccines through this program, including the MMR. A copy of your child's immunization record is required prior to the appointment to determine which vaccines your child needs. To schedule an appointment, call 410-612-1779 or by email. There is an administration fee per vaccine for each child. However, children who are enrolled in Maryland Medicaid medical assistance will not be charged this fee with proof of medical assistance coverage. For the Behavioral Health Bureau, we are seeing a decrease in opioid deaths. From April 24, 2024 to March 2025, there have been 39 total overdose deaths. Fatal overdose deaths in Hartford County are down by almost 38%. The number of overdose deaths by place of occurrence were highest in Aberdeen, where there were 13 deaths during that timeframe. The main substances were fentanyl, followed by cocaine and prescription opioids. All deaths were non-Hispanic white individuals, with the majority being male. The huge decrease in overdose deaths can be attributed in part to the hard work of our Behavioral Health Bureau in offering increased treatment and recovery services, naloxone distribution, and participation in community partnerships. The Environmental Health Bureau and the Hartford County Government worked together to update environmental health program fees based on the Hartford County Code 157-18. These fees had not been updated in over 20 years. All divisions of environmental health, including land and water resources, permits, and plan and review, plan, review, and inspections, began using the fee increase on January 1, 2025. In the past few months, an increase in revenue has been seen. Thank you to our amazing environmental health staff for their hard work during this transition, especially to Jody Higgs for her incredible coordination efforts with the county. And now, I have some remarks.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to hear those.
I know. And here they are. I would like to take a moment to publicly thank each and every employee at the Hartford County Health Department, and many of them are here tonight. I wish I could name everyone, but instead, if you'll indulge me, I will give a shout-out to the management team and directors. So special thanks to Silvana Baucher, Deputy Health Officer of Operations, Jamie Seibel, Medical Deputy Health Officer, Rania Nasar, Director of Populations Health, John Resline, Director of Environmental Health, Andrea Pappas, Director of Behavioral Health, Kim Prouse, Director of Care Coordination, Sarah Moore, Director of Family Health, Jen Mangle, Director of Clinical Health, Carmen Weddle, Acting Director of Administration, and Lisa Swank, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. All of the great work that I'm honored to report at these meetings is a direct result of the hard work of all Hartford County staff, Health Department staff. It takes special human beings to work in the field of public health. We are here to serve. We are passionate. We are humble, most of the time. We are not looking for awards or rewards. At times, we are self-deprecating because, well, you have to laugh. The work is just pure and simple public service for the greater good of our community in order to improve health, prevent disease, and promote good health for all people. In 2020, the Health Department team was tested. We were pushed beyond our limits as we fought the battle against COVID. We were launched into the limelight, for better or worse. We graciously accepted criticism and gratefully accepted support from our partners and the community, and we came back strong. What I learned personally from my experiences as health officer, and when my own character was attacked, is to always take the high road, never fight back publicly, stay still and wait for, wait until the storm ends and the truth comes out. It might take a while, but patiently stay on the side of truth. The team who worked by my side during those times know what I'm talking about. I am grateful to them, and this is where I offer my deepest appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Vincenti. Thank you for always supporting my efforts and endlessly standing up for me during those difficult times. I will never forget that, and I am truly grateful. What I leave the next health officer is my extremely simple philosophy that has served me well as a leader: keep your door open and give people the time of day. I have come to understand how important that is and how much people appreciate that. So now, finally, Mr. Vincenti, I would like to introduce you to my new boss. Not anyone can replace you, but this guy has some of your qualities, and you can guess which ones. He's young, he's handsome, he's smart, he's extremely charismatic, he's an expert negotiator, he looks good in plaid, and most importantly, he's potty-trained. But meet Silas. And he is saying she is all mine now. And so, I just want to express my gratitude. Well, I should go back to that picture, although I probably can't, but anyway.
He's looking at himself on TV.
Yes, I'm sure he is. He's like, so thank you all very much.
So Marcy, we want to thank you, and I want to thank you for your years of service. And I think the biggest thing for me is throughout all of the challenges that you've faced as a member of the Health Office, Health Department, as the health officer, you've always been even keeled, right? We could always count on you to be a calm voice. It's funny tonight because typically, I'm telling you to step into the microphone, and I wanted to tell you to step back tonight, but I just let it go.
Was it me making all that racket?
It is.
Oh, my God! It was the first time for everything.
But seriously, we appreciate your steadfast leadership over the years, your willingness to put up with all of us, not just this council, but prior council and the one before that. Just understanding that we were learning the same as you were, especially through COVID, right? We were all learning together, and it was some challenging times, but yet, we were able to stand up with supporting you and your team to make sure that the citizens had everything available to help them through this whole process. So with that, I'm going to open it up to any comments or questions from the council, starting with Mr. Jan Giordano.
She's waving her hand. She doesn't want me to talk. So Marcy is a new councilperson, I guess, six years ago, and then pretty much the first year going in with COVID, and then a new health officer. You know, the roller coaster going up and down, and obviously, you know, you always help putting up with me. I'm sure I'm not the easiest person to put up with, but, you know, I always see you out, whether I'm throwing little paper balls at you because you haven't seen me or something. But, you know, it's always nice seeing you out. The one thing that really hit home for me on this spread was the firearm safety. When I was eight years old, my best friend got shot and killed.
Oh, no.
And kind of brought back all that stuff. They looked for him for hours in the woods and everything, and finally found out that the older friend he was with had gotten his father's gun and shot him and didn't call anybody because he probably wouldn't have lived. And he was my best friend who was eight years old.
So sorry.
Yeah. I mean, and I'm sitting here thinking about it. I mean, you know, Tommy O'Meara, I mean, just, you know, Lake Parsippany, New Jersey. I mean, I know the house. You've lived right across the street from the lake and everything, and, you know, he was my best friend, and after that, you know, he was gone. So that was, you know, I'm glad to see that. I'm a little emotional about it, even though it's like 50-something years later, so. But Marcy, we're going to miss you, but I know I'm going to see you and your sister out all the time.
Okay.
Because you always know where I'm at, and I think you really stalked me.
Oh, I avoided it. I avoided it at all costs.
I think you stalked me, and we're going to make sure that we catch anybody who's not wearing their...
Their beard cover, yes.
Yes, beard covers. And then you could turn them in instead of me.
Yes, I will. I'll turn them into you.
But thank you. Thanks for everything. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Riley?
Yes, Marcy. First off, you got two of the boxes checked. He does look good in plaid, and he is potty-trained, but that's it.
Very good, okay.
But we will miss you, and I appreciate all the efforts you did for me up in North, and hopefully, we'll see you down at laboratories, you and your sister.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Getting a reputation.
So I think at this time, Marcy, we're going to move forward to a little bit of recognition for you.
Oh.
I'm going to ask Dr. K to come forward.
Oh, my goodness.
I had the great pleasure of meeting him virtually, so this is the first time in person. Welcome, Dr. K. And I say Dr. K because I'm not even going to try to pronounce his last name.
Dr. Kalayana Raman. I did it.
Marcy, would you like to come forward, please? And whoever you would like to come with you.
Kalayana Raman.
I'm going to bring the entire staff.
Absolutely. Well, Marcy, a couple of things. One, this is a certificate of appreciation from the Secretary of Maryland Department of Health for your 22 years of... Ah, I'm usually loud enough, but I'll do this, too. That's fine. This is a certificate of appreciation from the Secretary of Health, Dr. Sue Chomney, for your 22 years of service in a range of capacities in the Health Department. And I remember meeting you when I was at Healthcare for the Homeless over a decade ago, so it's been wonderful to know you over this time. I will give this to you. Thank you very much. Oh, they got a framed certificate. We got a fancy. I know. And a governor's citation as well, for your service to the state, for your 22 years of outstanding service. So thank you so much for everything that you've done to advance public health, and I think you know how I feel about public health and about all of my colleagues who do this work. So it is a labor of love at the end of the day. Thank you.
Yeah, we do. Thank you, Dr. K. At this time, we have a representative from the Governor's Office, Madison. Would you come forward?
You were just so great. We had to give you two of the same. So I am honored to present this governor's citation to Marcy Austin, Hartford County Health Officer. Be it known that on behalf of the citizens of this state, in recognition of the 22 years of dedicated and outstanding service you have made on behalf of the Hartford County Health Department, in honor of the high level of professionalism, expertise, and commitment you have demonstrated throughout your distinguished career, and as the people of Maryland join in expressing our great respect, admiration, and sincere best wishes on the occasion of your retirement, we are pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation. Also, your grandson is adorable, so I hope you have a happy retirement.
Mr. Riley? On behalf of the Maryland General Assembly?
Actually, my wife would love to be here as chair of the delegation, but she had her scholarship dinner that she's at tonight. But on behalf of the delegation, they did want to give you this official citation, signed by all the delegates for your 22 years of service. I told her not only would I give you this citation, but I'd also like to give you a hug. She would have looked a lot better in that photo than I do, but...
Mr. Vincenti?
I've been waiting for this one. Be it hereby known that the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this sixth day of May 2025, recognizes and congratulates Marcy Austin, Health Officer, Hartford County Health Department, 22 years of service, and express our appreciation for her dedicated service to the citizens of Hartford County and the state of Maryland. We extend our best wishes for success in all her future endeavors. You're welcome.
So again, Marcy, on behalf of all of my colleagues, I want to thank you for your 22 years of dedication to the citizens of Hartford County and providing them the best public health that you could. So thank you very much, you and your team. I want to come down and get a picture.
We'll fill in your spot.
I'm going to get on the other side. So while you're here, we're also saying goodbye to Megan tonight, who has been with us six years, taking pictures. You're her last, last person. So thank you as well for your service to the council. So let's just take a quick recess, Megan. Let's take a quick recess. Okay. Chair calls to order Legislative Session Day 25015. I ask you to all please stand for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you once again for the opportunity to gather in these chambers. We come to you in prayer this evening, asking for your guidance and wisdom. We thank you for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, help us to always communicate with the greatest respect and understanding as we navigate through the people's business. Lead us in our discussions, helping us to seek the best results and decisions for all. We ask that you continue to watch over all our military, law enforcement, and first responders, keep them safe and out of harm's way. As we honor our fallen law enforcement heroes today, we ask you to continue to wrap your caring arms around their families and friends for their loved ones' ultimate sacrifice. Father, we ask these things and more in your most holy name. Amen. Agenda number four, Presentation of Proclamations. We have none. Five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Council Appointments, MAKO Legislative Committee. We have Mr. Riley for our Maker We have Mr. Riley for our Maker Rep and Ms. Emhoff for alternate. May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Councilman Riley and Councilwoman Emhoff.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved in second to approve the Mako Legislative Committee appointments. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Mrs. Bullsato?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative and one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Councilwoman Emhoff to the Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Board.
Thank you, may I have a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Riley. Been moved in second to approve Ms. Emhoff to the Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsato?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Six special presentations, Miracle League of Harford County. Council, it is our honor to invite Mr. Walls, Mr. Grimm, to the front, please. Tom, I would just pull that a little closer.
Want to give Samantha a chance to get the download done.
Sure. And while we're waiting, while we're waiting, Mrs. Walls, I want to thank you for this special gift just for me, right, not for my colleagues, right? I can if I choose to. I don't think, yes, it, I don't think I'm gonna have a choice. But thank you. Yes, and we thank you for your commitment to them as well.
First of all, I want to introduce myself. I'm Tom Walls, President of the Miracle League of Harford County. My wife Sharon, sitting over here is the Secretary. Our daughter Katie is the Vice President, and then we have two other council members also. I want to thank President Vincenney and the County Council for allowing me the time this evening to bring you all up to date on what the Miracle League is doing. And hopefully, if there's some audience here that doesn't know anything about it, give them a little insight into it. I also want to thank those of you who've been able to come out to the field for various things, like opening day last month. Thank you very much for coming. It does make an impact. I've had several families come to us and say, hey, it was neat seeing them here and supporting us. So, thank you for that. Let me give you a little brief history for those who don't know. The Miracle League is a baseball league and field for individuals with special needs or disabilities. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) run by citizens of Harford County. The organization was started in 2016 with the purpose of finding a location for the field and raising the funds to build the field. The field is a special-designed, non-trip, rubberized, latex-free surface. Construction of the field was completed in 2020, right during COVID, perfect timing, at a cost of $675,000. We were granted some ground in the Shucks Road Sports Complex by former County Executive Glassman and the Parks and Rec Department. And may I mention that President Vincenney was part of the council at the time, and he actually had a paintbrush in his hand out there, painting the inside of the dugouts. We are starting our fifth year of giving individuals differing needs the opportunity to learn and play baseball. We had our first season in the spring of 2021, and had about 35 individuals participating. We finished the fall season, last fall, with over 170 individuals registered and an active participation of about 115 to 120 players a week. And we thought that was going to be a dream that we would never see. We thought, you know, in five years, we'll never see 100 players, but it's been there and passed. We currently have almost 200 players registered to play. We finished, we now have multiple teams, starting with age five to eight, with 40 players and growing every week. I think we signed up six new five-year-olds this past week. The age-five-to-eight group starts at 9:30. We then have a game at 10:15 for ages nine through 13, with over 30 players and two teams, one being the Rockies and one being the Orioles JV, or as we sometimes call them, the Orioles down on the farm. These teams play every Saturday in April, May, and June. We also have a fall season in September and October. The players in these two age groups have a buddy that works with them on the field, helping them, keeping them safe. Shane has been a fantastic help, being one of the buddies and also coaching on the side a little bit. Our buddies consist of adults that work with special-needs individuals, or school students, or sometimes parents. Many of the students are very active in their participation. A lot of the students are participating in sports in school, not necessarily baseball or softball, but soccer and basketball, and they come out and help with this. We keep time served on the field for these students so they can get community service credit with their school. At 11 o'clock on Saturday, we start our age 14 and up. We currently have six teams making up this age group, with two of the teams being our more advanced players. These six teams play on a rotating schedule between the Saturday games of 11 and 12 and Tuesday nights under the lights. I would like to recognize Harford County Delegate Mike Griffith and Senator Jason Galyon for sponsoring a grant bill a couple of years ago for money from the state to help cover for the lights. The players and their families love coming out and being under the lights at our Tuesday games. We have also started a group of players that we have named the Miracles. These players are mainly our advanced players, and they've taken on the challenges of the Harford County Sheriff's Office, the HCC Men's Baseball Team, Archbishop Curly High School varsity team, and Harford Bank even came out with a team. And there's been other groups interested in playing our Miracles. But the opportunity to learn and play the game, excuse me, is just a part of what's happening with our players. The players are making new friends, the families are making new friends, and are sharing with each other. This is part of the Miracle League that goes unnoticed by the casual person passing by the field on Saturday. It has been the biggest inspiration to watch these players and families grow in their social aspect. We had one, have one young man, he's in his early twenties, that never had a birthday party until last year because he never felt like he had friends. This past year, he approached his mother and asked if they could have a party because now he had friends in the Miracle League that he wanted to invite. I understand they had a nice bowling day up Forest Hill. We have families that go to functions together or have gatherings at someone's house. This league has provided the coaches and buddies an opportunity to help and share with their players. We have built long-lasting friendships with the players and their families. Our players are getting opportunities they would never have had without the field. The National Office of the Miracle League in Conyers, Georgia, does an All-Star Weekend once a year. Last year's event was scheduled in Covington, Georgia, but was postponed until this past weekend. We were invited to send two players down to participate, and they had a fantastic time. They received a lot of items, one being a Chipper Jones autographed baseball and a championship ring that looks like a Super Bowl ring or World Series ring, and it has Miracle League All-Stars with stones all the way around it and then their name engraved on the side of it. Great keepsake. It's our dream and hope to be able to host the All-Star Weekend in Harford County in the near future. Permanent restrooms are a requirement for this to happen, and with the help of Delegate Griffith, again, and the Parks and Rec Department, this is in the works. Delegate Griffith got another grant for the county for $250,000, and Parks and Rec was supposed to have $250,000 in their budget this year to help cover the other part of it. The All-Star Weekend will bring 350 to 400 people to the county for the weekend. The parents come to us and tell us what a blessing we are to them and their player. I keep telling them that they got it all wrong. They are the blessing to us. To watch how many of them have grown, not only physically, but in their skills and ability to play the game and their social skills, is a blessing beyond words. I want to close again by thanking you for this time to share our story. I invite everyone to visit our website, www.miracleleagueharford.org, to see more about us. You can find our spring schedule there, and we invite you to come to the field anytime we are playing to watch these amazing athletes at their best. All right, there's some videos from starting the field to some of the players.
Shane, do you have anything to add?
Sure, I'd just like to thank council for all their support. I'd much rather be here in this capacity as Citizen Shane Grimm. Lot easier, lot easier. So, I just want to echo everything that Tom said. I came to the Miracle League through my journey through sobriety, and these kids do more for us than we could ever do for them.
Well, thank you for that. And I, I'm sitting here thinking back to the first time that we sat and talked about the possibility of a facility like this. And to watch your enthusiasm, you are the one that should be recognized here tonight because without your push, this would never come to fruition. There's no question about that. You and your family, your team, your dedicated team, there's no question. And when we watched it come out of the ground, we saw it improve. We saw the kids enjoying everything there, their families, the lights, the possibility now of the bathrooms moving forward. It's just amazing to watch it from nothing to today. So, thank you for your dedication and commitment to the kids.
Thank you for all the support.
Absolutely. Council, anyone with any comments or questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Let Ms. Emhoff go first, ladies first.
So, I've shared, I'm the sibling of someone who has special needs. And it's programs like the Miracle League and like you guys that make being the caretaker of someone with special needs, it's a lot easier because of the community and the village that you guys provide. It is, it can be extremely isolating for a lot of these families and a lot of these kids. And by bringing together a whole bunch of people who are just there to make sure that they have a good time and have a village around them, really means the world to all of us. And I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. It's great to see new families coming to the field, and you can see barriers up when they first come, but within 15, 20 minutes, those barriers have fallen down, and they realize that we are there and to take care of their individual, first of all, but to give them an opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Tom, so, thank you for everything you do for that. I might have a challenge for you because I have a cousin who grew up in New Jersey, and she used to go to bowling, and she also used to do bocce. And the Italian festival we have every year, we do bocce tournament for Special Olympics. So, what I was thinking is that maybe we can have bocce courts there with the same material that you have for the field for the kids sometimes that can't play, you know, baseball and everything, but would definitely be able to do bocce. I know they love doing that, and maybe we can somehow or another expand that, even if it's two courts or something, and get that, but use that same material. I'd love to see us expand on that. I know I was out there, I saw that there's more land out there. I think it would be phenomenal. I think you're the person that could probably push that. Any way that we could help, I definitely would be on board. But those kids, you see those kids at the Special Olympics, they love that. You know, it's something that could be done, it's not super expensive, like, you know, bowling alley or something, and we can certainly get, you know, that material and put it out and never have to worry about the maintenance of it, really. And hopefully, you might think that's a good idea, and we can work to do that and get us a couple of fields out there, but that's my idea. I've had it for a couple of weeks, and I was kind of waiting till you got here so that I can put it out to everybody, so everybody hears it.
We can work on that.
Great, thanks, appreciate it.
Ms. Robert?
Yes, thank you. And I attended the opening day, and I thought it was great. It kind of reminded me of the Miracle League. I kind of forgot about the Miracle League, and I work with families that have disabilities. So, it gave me that concept of being able to refer for some of those activities that they need to get involved with, but it was great to see the smiles on all the children's faces. They were so excited to start, they were wanting to start before we even did the Pledge Allegiance. They were ready to go, picking their, you know, positions already, and it was great to see the excitement. And I could see some of the nervousness of some of the new ones that looked like they were coming on and trying to figure out their way. So, this is a great organization, great concept.
Yeah, we're up to about 10 wheelchair players now. We have a couple of sight impaired players. Several, and then we have a couple of players who use walkers or walking aids. So, you know, it's not just autism and downs and that sort of thing, so.
So, that Shucks facility is amazing. The county did an outstanding job putting that in and planning it over the years. The Miracle League is a great addition to an already fantastic facility, has a great walking trail, has a sensory park for the kids, has a playground down on the other end, ball fields, plenty of parking. So, it is just a great facility, and we're excited for the change to come as far as the bathrooms and to continue that county investment and state investment. I think it's well, well-done, well-used.
Thank you.
Yep, anyone else? Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you again, and don't ever not take credit for what you're doing, brother.
Appreciate that.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
What flavor of the cookies? She hasn't broke them out yet. Okay, thank you.
I'm just glad Chad's ones in here, because Chad would want all those.
I better get a cookie, otherwise you'd get those candy bars.
All right, moving on, agenda number seven, approval of minutes. Public hearing, April 15, 2025, legislative day 25-012, April 15, 2025. Special legislative, special session, 25-014, April 22, 2025. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read in Resolution 01025 and 01125, please.
Resolution 10-25, road closure portion of Technology Drive introduced by Council Vincente at the request of the County Executive. A resolution granting the request for the closure of a portion of Technology Drive. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 6:30 PM in these council chambers. Resolution 11-25, economic development loan, 126 South Main Bel Air LLC, introduced by Council Prince Vincente at the request of the County Executive. A resolution to authorize a loan through Economic Development Opportunity Loan Fund to 126 South Main Bel Air LLC in the amount of $200,000 for the purpose of renovating and developing Charm City Run of Bel Air, an athletic apparel and footwear specialty store located at 126 South Main Bel Air, Maryland 21014, which has operated at this location since 2005, and to provide that such loan be made upon such terms and conditions with such security interest rate which may be approved by resolution of the County Council of Harford County, Maryland. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 6:30 PM in these council chambers.
Thank you. Nine, introduction of bills. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read in Bill 2506 and 2507.
Bill 25-006, Pay and Classification Plan, introduced by Council President Vincente at the request of the County Executive. An emergency act to repeal the Harford County Pay Plan and Classification Plan, Harford County Bill Number 24-15, and to enact a new Harford County Pay Plan and Classification Plan to stand in lieu of the bill repeal to provide a pay plan for county employees, all in accordance with Section 603 of the Charter, and to provide that this act shall not be codified in the Harford County Code. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 6:30 PM in these council chambers. Bill 25-007, CPI Bond Authorization, introduced by Council President Vincente at the request of the County Executive. A bill to authorize and empower Harford County, Maryland, to borrow on its full faith and credit and issue... to borrow on its full faith and credit and issue and sell bonds or otherwise evidence of indebtedness, including lease financing in the amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-six million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Principal amount, the proceeds thereof to be used for the expansion, reconstruction, rehabilitation, renovation and improvement of certain project as described in the annual budget and appropriation ordinance, Bill twenty-five dash zero zero five, as amended for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six and as described in this bill in accordance with section five twenty-four of the Charter of Harford County and section one twenty-three forty of the Code of Harford County or otherwise permitted by law. Authorizing the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, the County Council to adopt an administrative resolution that shall provide for a form of instrument by which any indebtedness is to be evidenced, the manner by which bonds or any other indebtedness may be secured at the rate, rates of interest to be paid and generally for such other matters as may deemed appropriate by the County Council in connection therewith and authorizing the County Council by administrative resolution or the County Executive, Harford County, Maryland, the County Executive, by executive order to determine the form of various documents as are necessary or desirable to implement the financing authorized herein, the manner of issuance and delivery of any bonds or any other evidence of indebtedness, the payment of all necessary expenses in connection therewith, the method by which any bonds or other evidence of indebtedness shall be sold, maturity schedule and redemption provisions, authorizing the appointment of certain agents and otherwise generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery and payment of bonds or any other evidence of indebtedness, providing that bonds or any other indebtedness shall be issued upon the full faith and credit and taxing power of Harford County, Maryland, providing for the issuance of bond anticipation notes or any other form of indebtedness upon adoption of an administrative resolution by the County Council proving the interest rate or rates to be borne, thereby for all a portion of the products described herein for which the proceeds of sale of bond anticipation notes shall be used, providing that after the issuance of a bond, anticipation notes or other form of indebtedness or any other renewal thereof, the County Council shall authorize the issuance of bonds to pay said bond anticipation notes or other form of indebtedness, providing for disbursement of the proceeds of the sale of the bonds or any other indebtedness authorized herein and for the levying of charges, assessments and all taxes necessary to provide payment of the principal of and premium, if any, and interest on the bonds or other form of indebtedness, providing that certain additional matters may be determined by the resolution of the County Council or may be reserved onto the County Executive as prescribed by such resolution, providing the method of fixing the interest rates to be borne by such bonds and generally providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith and generally relating to funding of the projects described herein. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, June third, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM in these council chambers.
Thank you. Agenda number ten, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills. We have none. Twelve, enrollment of bills, none. Thirteen, unfinished business, none. Fourteen, new business, council requests. Requests for outside counsel, Rifkin, Weiner, Livingston LLC. The council has been put on notice of a lawsuit filed by marijuana dispensary against Harford County, Maryland, the County Executive, Department of Planning and Zoning, the County Council and five of our individual council members due to the administration's refusal to issue the owner a zoning certificate for use. In light of this lawsuit and the actions of the administration which have brought this lawsuit forward and the possibility of potentially more lawsuits in the future, it is necessary for council to hire outside litigation council to represent us in this litigation which is, was filed on April seventeenth and future litigation, if any. If there is no future litigation beyond the current dispensary lawsuit, council will not need to engage special counsel, but if so, we would have them on retainer. May I have a motion, please?
Council Pres- Council President, I move to approve the request for Rifkin, Weiner, Livingston LLC as outside counsel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved to second to approve council request for outside counsel. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Robert?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Janjerdano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Soddo?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the request for outside counsel is hereby approved. B, police accountability vacancies. Council is now advertising to fill two vacancies on the police accountability board. Anyone interested is encouraged to apply by visiting the link on our website. Applications are being accepted through May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And then C, um, executive order twenty-five oh one, reorganization, purchase of sale, lease or real property. Mr. Overbay?
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. Uh, my name is Steve Overbay. I'm here before you this evening to introduce executive order twenty-five zero one in which the County Executive proposes a change to the executive branch via assignment of functions, powers and duties among agencies. Specifically, uh, we're talking about the real property functions of Harford County government, moving from the procurement office to the Department of Law. Uh, you will see throughout the executive order, this has happened a number of times, um, beginning in nineteen ninety-seven and thus concluding in twenty twenty-five with this particular move. Um, but with that, I open it up to any questions the council may have.
Sure, um, just, just for the record, the move was made sometime ago, right, Ms. Legge?
It was this time last year and during the budget last year that those two employees and positions were moved from procurement to the law department, but an executive order was never sent to the council a year ago. So, we've recognized that, brought it to their attention and they've now brought it over to us.
Which, which takes care of everything.
That takes care of the reorganization, um, pursuant to four thirteen in the charter that requires an executive order to make that change. So, now they're making that change officially.
Perfect. Uh, anyone have any questions? Uh, with, uh, no questions, this executive order twenty-five oh one will become effective on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. Overbay. Agenda items, seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We have one, Mr. President, Gina Krieger.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Hi, my name is Gina Krieger. My address is seven zero four Connolly Farms Road, Fallston, Maryland, two one oh four seven. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak today. My name is Gina Krieger and I'm here as a concerned citizen and advocate for animal welfare in Harford County. The Humane Society of Harford County holds a position of great responsibility in our community. It is a primary organization entrusted with the care, safety and sheltering of animals, many of whom have already suffered neglect, abandonment or abuse. And because this organization receives county funding and operates under a public trust, transparency and accountability are not optional, they are essential. Over the past several months, serious concerns have surfaced regarding the operations and decision-making at the shelter. These concerns have come from volunteers, former staff, adopters and citizens who simply want to ensure the animals of this county are being treated with the compassion and dignity that they deserve. Unfortunately, attempts to seek clarity or raise questions have too often been met with resistance, a lack of transparency or vague reassurances without data to support them. That is unacceptable, not just from an ethical standpoint, but from a fiscal one as well. Taxpayer dollars are being, um, are being used to support this organization and the public has a right to know how those funds are being spent and whether the Humane Society is meeting its obligations in both care standards and community engagement. This is not an attack, this is a call for oversight. I'm respectfully asking this council to take action whether through a formal audit increased, audit, sorry, formal audit, increased reporting requirements or the formation of an oversight committee to ensure that the Humane Society is operating with full transparency, proper accountability and in alignment with its mission. The animals of Harford County and the citizens who care about them deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to doing what's right.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Sixteen, business from council members. Ms. Robert?
Good evening and thank you, um, Mr. President. Um, I, starting with, uh, Thursday, April twenty-fourth, since we were last here, um, I attended the SARC event, walk a mile in their shoes, presented proclamation to the CEO, very nice event that they had at the, um, Hopkins Brewery and it was hot outside, so it was perfect timing. Um, but it was, it was a good time there. Um, I attended the Family and Trauma Institute event on, um, Friday, April twenty-fifth. That's always an event for us social workers and therapists to learn more about what to do about trauma in the community and working with mental health, um, clients. I then on April twenty-sixth went and attended the flotilla for the Gunpowder River at Mariner Point Park, spoke there, um, a lot of concerns about the environment, um, regarding the waterways and, um, working with them on some of the issues surrounding that, um, new construction that's going on down in our area. Um, and the, um, County Executive's Office has been very good with working with me on that issue. And, um, I had a Commission on Disabilities meeting on April twenty-eighth. We have four vacancies, um, we had four interviews, we voted on three appropriate ones to send, um, over to the County Executive's Office, um, that we thought were suitable. I attended the legislative wrap-up, um, hosted by the Harford County Chamber of Commerce on April thirtieth. It was good to have all the delegation there, um, letting us know what was going on, um, in Annapolis and what was passing and what they see as problems down the road. They believe they may have to go back in session possibly in October with the federal funding. Um, still having a, a problem and having some issues. Um, I did go to Happy Harford Tourism, launched to learn about the new tourism office. Um, they have an app now that you are able to download and look at what's going on in the community. And they did advise if you had any activities or events you are planning that you could put them in the app as well. Um, and I, what else did I do? Um, I actually was at the Career Fair at Edgewood Elementary School. I was shocked that I was there, but I was there as a county council representative and, um, a lot of kids asked me questions. The one they asked me the most was what I do in my free time and I kind of think it in my head like, really, what is that? But I told them I like to go to the beach. Um, one of the fifth graders told me she wants to be the president of the United States. And then I had one third grader tell me he wants to be Spider-Man when he grows up. So, it was, it was a fun activity. It was five hundred and forty some children that passed through and we gave out coloring sheets, I gave out squishy balls that were flags and explained what the flag meant, um, the stars and the stripes. And then last night I had the Edgewood Joppa Joppa Town Community Advisory Board, um, which always has a good turnout, um, for our community. We are talking about Amtrak, uh, we have Amtrak, um, with the bridges, um, and the waterways and our community wants to see some changes with, uh, when they put all the bridges in and for the trains and they're going to make them higher for boaters to be able to have a higher way to come through as well. And that is it for me. Oh, wait, no, it's not. I forgot. I got appointed by the governor's office, um, and I'm getting sworn in tomorrow to be on the Maryland Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robert. Ms. Emhoff?
Um, so you guys know I was appointed on April twenty-second. I started my first day on the budget workshops, in fact, my first four days. Um, so, in addition to learning all the new roles that I have, I was also able to meet with several of our county leaders, inclu- including County Executive Castley last week. I also attended the Family and Trauma Conference, um, with Councilwoman Roberts. Um, then on the April twenty-sixth, I attended the Judith Resnick Award Celebration through American Association of University Women at Harford Community College where they honored, um, an eleventh grader from every public high school who is interested in STEM and are studying things that are just absolutely incredible. Um, we also attended the Fallston Community Advisory Board meeting on April thirtieth. And then we also had our grand opening and ribbon cutting for the Natalie Seafood in District B on May first. And then for upcoming events, um, I will be attending the Abingdon, Emmerton County Community Advisory Board meeting this Thursday.
Thank you, Ms. Emhoff. Mr. Janjerdano?
Thank you, Council President. So, um, Saturday, April nineteenth, we did the, uh, Miracle League opening day celebration, uh, Shucks Park, so, um, and we had Tom in here today, so, so that was good segue into that. Um, on, on, uh, I think Friday, we did the Natalie Seafood Kitchening soft opening because we couldn't make it out there Thursday because of some, uh, health officer interviews. So, myself, Council President and Councilwoman Emhoff went, so, um, and then she was able to go back, so that's great. Um, Thursday, May fourth, did the Harford County, um, Sheriff's Annual Award Ceremony. Saturday, did the grand opening of Advanced Chiropractic and Wellness. Michelle Christman, uh, opened up, um, real nice place right on, uh, Main Street in Bel Air. Um, nominations for the Town of Bel Air Annual Awards are due on June ninth. The Business of the Year Award, Citizen of the Year Award and the Archer Bowl Award. It's, uh, usually for, um, a building that's done renovations. Um, Friday, May ninth, uh, the annual Town of Bel Air Garden Mart, uh, plans and crafts for sale from local garden clubs. Events will take place inside the Armory this weekend as the, uh, the Derby. So, um, nobody's been, saw the Derby, uh, get out there and see the Derby. I don't remember if it's Saturday or Sunday. So, huh?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay. So, it's Saturday. Um, this past Saturday, I got a call and went down to Mariner Point Park to the, uh, powerboat races at, uh, Mariner Park, uh, not Mariner Park, at, um, Flying Point Marina, uh, Flying Point and then over there. So, they had thirty-two boats. They came from all over, uh, Jersey Skiff, some other boats. Um, it had great weather, um, and I know Councilwoman Roberts went down on Sunday, but I think she forgot to mention that, right? Didn't you go down?
Yes, I did go down. I was trying to get it between the rain.
So, but, um, been to a lot of boat races, especially down in Keys and the guys love the water there because it's smooth. The boats can really run fast. You get a phenomenal view of the boats from the park that you probably don't get in a lot of other places. So, um, hopefully next year we'll promote that a little bit more and get some people down on that. And I think that's it. Oh, and happy Mother's Day to all the mothers.
Thank you, Mr. Janjerdano. Mr. Riley?
Yeah, just two, uh, three things, uh, want to congratulate Joan Henderson, um, for her contribution to the arts community. We gave her proclamation at the Cultural Arts Board here in Bel Air. Um, congratulations to the new patriots at Forest Hill. And then again, uh, say your prayers for all our law enforcement out there. We had a fallen heroes today, well put on by the sheriff's department. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Soddo?
Thank you. Um, and I'd like to thank the Harford County Association of Realtors for recognizing April as fair, as Fair Housing Month. Um, they had an artwork contest last week that I attended with my son and the theme was everyone deserves a hu- a home. It was a nice night viewing all the artwork. And May is Mental Health Awareness Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness, reducing stigma and promoting support for mental health and well-being. And, uh, I'd like to wish all the mothers and mother figures in our county a great Mother's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soddo. Um, on to fifteen, business from the president. Uh, the first thing I'd like to do is just remind everyone that tomorrow evening at, um, seven PM is our first, uh, budget public hearing in chambers. And then the second will be Thursday, the fifteenth at seven PM in the chambers. Um, as far as events, uh, I attended the Daughters of the American Revolution, um, their award ceremony. Also, the Harford County Sheriff's Office Annual Award Ceremony, the Fallen Heroes Ceremony this morning. And then this past weekend in Happy Grace, um, following their first Friday event, we had our, hosted our forty-third Happy Grace Decoy and Wildlife Art Festival and it was extremely well attended. The town was absolutely packed Friday, Saturday, uh, and quite a few people as well on Sunday. So, uh, weather held out nice for that, so, um, was a, was a great time. And then, um, we are narrowing down our health officer search interviews. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, to narrow down the search and select a candidate to move forward to the Maryland Department of Health. Uh, that will be sent to Dr. Kay who was here this evening. Um, and then finally, uh, Jeanie and I want to wish our, express our deepest condolences to Lawrence C. Shinelli and his family and friends due to the passing of his wife, Millie. Uh, she was ninety-one, passed away on April twenty-third. Uh, truly a pillar in the Happy Grace community in St. Patrick's Church and she will surely be missed and we ask all of you to keep the Shinelli family and friends And we ask all of you to keep the Chanelly family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.